And good evening and welcome to the November 10th Murfreesboro City School Board of Education Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please stand as we have Daniel Parkhurst, who is a school safety education officer in Murfreesboro City Schools, who will lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I move aside. All right, you have your agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, communication. Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Christman if he would join me and join you at the podium, please. Now, this is always dangerous whenever Glenn and I get together.
I got your back.
I know you do. And I won't say what you say about me either. But it's been a real pleasure to work with him, whether it's been with CADCORE, with Reed to Succeed, or with other organizations, Child Advocacy Center, and especially with the school system, because he is indeed a leader. He's someone that I think we all admire. I often tease him about being my brother that I never had, but I can tell you that whenever something happens in the schools, or whenever we need anything, he is right there. When 9/11 happened, he called to make sure that we were okay. In fact, he came over late that afternoon to make sure that we were okay. And so I can't tell you how much I admire this man, how much I appreciate him. So it's a real pleasure that we are going to have a proclamation. I'm going to give you the framed proclamation at a later date, but... A proclamation of the Murfreesboro City School Board of Education honoring Chief Glenn Christman. Whereas Murfreesboro City Schools has observed his work as chief of police since 2003, and whereas during his time of service to the city of Murfreesboro, he has worked to ensure the safety of children by providing crossing guards to all schools and having a law enforcement present at school events and school excursions off-campus. And whereas he has encouraged progressive programs in education such as DARE, GREAT, and Rad Kids, forging an unbreakable relationship with Murfreesboro City Schools. And whereas he has guided the city schools in increasing safety awareness, developing effective responses to emergencies, and has conducted annual safety audits for all school buildings. And whereas he has been a vigorous leader and an effective proponent of a common sense approach to the relationship between law enforcement and the community as evidenced by his work in the federal housing areas of Murfreesboro, most notably with the community policing approach in the Franklin Heights community, which resulted in international wars to the city. And I'm going to stop right here. Murfreesboro was really blessed to have, I think, probably one of the first community policing efforts in the state, or at least...
Early.
Early. And what it meant to the community was really remarkable. And I think that built a culture between the community and the police department all across the city. Whereas he has connected volunteer agencies, faith-based organizations, governmental institutions, educational health providers, and other entities too numerous to mention to help create and lead the community anti-drug coalition of Rutherford County and its vision of a safe and healthy drug-free community. And whereas he has ensured that the Murfreesboro Police Department was at the table during the formation of Reed to Succeed, and has continued to support that organization as it has promoted literacy throughout Rutherford County. And whereas his leadership as president of the executive board resulted in the growth and outreach of the Child Advocacy Center, and his commitment to the Child Protective Investigative Team has increased the effectiveness of its work. And whereas he has successfully worked with two directors of Murfreesboro City Schools to create positive, open avenues of communication. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Murfreesboro City School Board acknowledges the accomplishments of the city of Murfreesboro Police Chief Glenn Christman, offers its sincere appreciation to him for the level of collaboration and partnership he has facilitated, as well as the level of safety he has ensured for our students and their families, and wishes him the best, although I hate it like the dickens, as he pursues other endeavors in life. Signed this 10th day of November, 2015, by Mr. Butch Campbell, who is the chair, and by me. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I want to, I want to, yeah, I think a round of applause for anybody who's... I do want to present you with several cards from multiple of our students in Murfreesboro City Schools. Along with, and you'll see, we have some banners on the wall from different schools. And thank you very much for all that you have done for Murfreesboro City Schools, as well as for the city of Murfreesboro. You've been an asset. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll miss you.
Thank you very much. I'm humbled and honored. I was thinking, as I was getting ready to come tonight, I am a proud graduate of Murfreesboro City Schools. Bell Wood was the K8 school that I attended, and Ms. Irene Baldwin was my principal. Mary Scales was one of my teachers, and we could go on and on and on. But it's just been a blessing and an honor to work with all of the people at Murfreesboro City Schools. We have great teachers. We have wonderful children, wonderful administrators, and the finest people that you could ask for to sit on our board over the years that have made our system what it is now. And we just, we're honored and very proud and humbled to be a proud partner at Murfreesboro Police. We look forward to continuing to do that and hopefully growing those services that our school safety education officers are involved with. Officer Parkhurst is here tonight. He's sporting his no shade November beard, by the way, to raise money for the American Cancer Society, and it's looking pretty good, headed to a childbirth in class, all right? So I hope for you to be held up on my account. But thank you for all that you do for our children. Thank you for all that you do for our city. Our children are our future, and certainly they have the finest education in our Murfreesboro City Schools that I think they can get anywhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's an amazing relationship, and a real blessing, and I appreciate it, Clyde Atkinson and also Mike Bowen being here tonight, along with their chief. I think it shows great respect for you, Glenn, so congratulations to the staff that you have. Continue with communications. Received an email on the weekend, and you never know when you receive an email on the weekend, whether it's going to be a really good email or something's going on, but this was a great email. And what the email said is that the ELL teacher at Hobgood, who is Sarah Chumney, has received her National Board certification. And I would like at some point for her to come and talk with the board about what that means. But you'll remember that Nancy Duggan was the first teacher in the state that received that when she was a teacher at Northfield. So we're extremely proud of Sarah. It's quite an accomplishment. There's a lot of work involved, and so our best congratulations to her. Also, thank you to the kindergarten classes at Overall Creek. They have donated $1,249.15 to the Indigent Children's Fund. This is a fund that provides children with emergency clothing, so we certainly appreciate that. We also would like to thank Farm Credit Mid-America for their furniture donation to Bradley Academy. Thank you to Trust Point, a food service provider for St. Thomas, Rutherford, for their donation of coats and gloves and winter accessories for the students of Murfreesboro City Schools. And we'd like to congratulate Discovery School. You'll remember that they went to Auburn last year for the regionals, and they're on their way again. So great congratulations to Discovery School Robotics. They'll be going down the 4th through the 6th of December, and we expect them to be tremendously successful there, just as they were at Lipscomb. So great congratulations to them, and thank you Stacy Burke for your continued leadership with that group. Also, thank you to the Murfreesboro Symphony Orchestra. We had a concert at Bradley Academy on November 1st. It was a free concert to the community, and it was a Latin American concert, and this is the second year that they have done that, and it was tremendously successful for those families. I'd like to remind you that we do have the TSBA Leadership Conference Convention, the 13th through the 16th, and we have American Education Week. We have that next week, and this is the chance for us to celebrate public education. So I encourage the public to thank teachers, to thank other support staff that are in the schools that work with children every single day. Many of us would not be here if it were not for public education. In fact, teaching is the profession on which all other professions depend. Everyone that is out there at some point was educated by someone, so I think it's a great thing that we will be celebrating that next week. Also, would like to remind the public and remind you that on Friday, February 5th, we will be having the City Schools Foundation Excellence in Education Gala. I was at their meeting there today, and they're well on their way in planning this, so I think it's going to be a great night. And then finally, we'd like to take time to thank our veterans. We will have several of our schools tomorrow that will have veteran celebrations, but I think the fact that we enjoy a free country, the fact that we can have public schools, the fact that we can sit here and be safe, that we need to acknowledge their devotion to our country and their sacrifice, and the sacrifice of their families. And those are your communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Consent items? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Dr. Brown, thank you, a second.
Second.
Got a question.
Mr. Barrett, thank you for a second now. Any discussion? I had Ms. Renee and then Ms. Phillips.
I have a question as to, did this come from the state? Did we fill it in?
Oh, the compliance report is something that comes before you every year. What happens is Karen will send that to the schools. It says that we are in compliance with the rules and regulations, and it's something that we do every year. So we ask each school to look through the rules and regulations and make sure they're compliant, and then we certify it as a district.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
That was my question.
Okay.
We're good.
Any other questions on consent items? Have a motion to approve? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items?
Good evening, Board. We're here presenting the approval of the rezoning plan. And as you know, we proposed to you rezoning a few schools to reduce the capacity issues to schools where we're adding classrooms and schools that have some capacity. In your board package you have, where Hobgood will regain 119 students approximately from Reeves Rogers and 40 pre-K students from John Pittard. Reeves Rogers then will lose 119 students for theirs, which will put us out of those portables that they're in right now. John Pittard will be losing 123 students, plus or minus, and the 40 that we're sending to Hobgood for the pre-K to get them where they're back under 900 students again, because they are reaching the number again of close to 1,000. Northfield will pick up the students that are rezoned from John Pittard, about 123 of those, and that school does have the additional capacity to do that. And so what we've done is have the meetings. We went out to the community twice, had two meetings out there. We had board members present. We had central office staff. We had interpreters with us. We had principals there, and we showed the plan to anyone who is interested in it. We also had TV coverage from Nashville on Channel 2 and Channel 4, and they covered it multiple times. We had coverage from the local newspapers. We had coverage on the radio. We had it on our website, and we sent personal letters to everyone impacted potentially by this rezoning. We did not have many show up at the meetings. The comments were made to us about the rezoning. No one wrote anything down on a sheet, except for one person, who was one of our own employees who just had a question, was not impacted by the rezoning at all. Overall, what we're asking you to do is to look at the rezoning plan and include a grandfathering and sibling policy that we have had for the last many years since I've been here, to allow students who will rise to 5th and 6th grade to stay at their current school and not have to be rezoned if they can provide their own transportation. And then their siblings can also grandfather at the school with the older sibling. So this helps kind of offset the shock of people moving in the last year or two of their schooling in a school, and it gives them the opportunity to actually stay. On your board information on page 30, it shows the rezoning plan. The two areas moved. Area 1 is the area that was moved from Reeves Rogers to Hobgood, and Area 2 and 3 was moved from John Pittard over to Northfield. So what we're asking for you is your consideration on doing this rezoning plan and asking for the approval of the plan and the grandfathering and sibling policies as presented.
All right. I'm sure we will have some questions. Let's entertain some questions first. Ms. Phillips, and then Dr. Brown?
Mine is more of a statement. First, I want to commend Mr. Anderson and his staff on the very sensitive and professional handling. Zoning can always be a challenging and difficult issue for families. We have to realize families are impacted, but I have been so impressed by your handling of this and the public meetings. My personal concern was I didn't want to change demographics in any extreme way at any of the schools, because that brings a lot of other challenges. And so I see that that has been handled beautifully, and I want to thank you for that, and I support this zoning change. Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
The meeting that we had at Hobgood was only one day after the letter went out to the parents, which is short notice, and that could be a reason why we didn't have any parents at that meeting. Have we had any additional feedback from the Hobgood parents since that meeting was held?
No, they were allowed to go to the Northfield meeting as well, because we told them both of the meetings, and it was not school-specific to which ones. We had only a total of 11 people come over to Northfield for that meeting, and no one wrote anything to us. No questions were asked on paper that we had to give you.
Okay. Yeah, well, the question pertaining to the zoning plan, Mr. Barrett?
More of a comment. I think, and I said this last time, just the appreciation of keeping the neighborhoods together on this and keeping that in mind. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I agree with that. Thank you, but it just seems like it'd be such a challenging task trying to figure out the zones. When do you... Of course, none of us want to rezone. That's part of the negatives of the growth. But when do you think that we'll have... We just had a major overhaul two years ago. When will our next major overhaul be?
The next major overhaul will be when we open up the next new school.
Which will be two, three years.
We have other questions? Do you need a motion from us to go forward, or I thought we did that at our last meeting?
At the last meeting, I asked you for a motion to go and present the plan to the public, and now it's for you to approve the plan as presented with the grandfathering and sibling policy.
Okay, all right.
I move we accept the plan with the grandfathering and sibling policy.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Phillips, for the motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for a job well done.
Thank you, Board.
I don't dare ask how long you've been working on this. It's been a while.
Okay, next, you have on your agenda the approval, on first reading, of Board Policy STU 64 regarding sudden cardiac arrest. This is a new policy. In April of 2015, the Tennessee General Assembly passed a statute called the Sudden Cardiac Arrest Prevention Act, which required school systems and recreational sport organizations that charge a fee and compete to implement sudden cardiac arrest policies and training for coaches and providing information to parents. There are three main components of the statute, and it is first to inform and educate coaches, youth athletes, and their parents, and require them to sign a cardiac arrest information form before they start competitions, and to require removal of a youth athlete who appears to have symptoms of sudden cardiac arrest from play or practice at the time of the symptoms. And third, to require youth athletes to be cleared by a licensed healthcare professional before being allowed to return to play or practice. This policy follows the state statute, which goes into effect January 1. That's why we wanted to get it before the board in time to go through two readings, so we could have it in effect starting January 1. And it is, if you recall, a couple of years ago, the state had passed laws regarding concussions. This is very similar unto that. And the Tennessee Department of Health has training that's already in place that coaches and parents can go and see. There are links to that training on the Tennessee Department of Health's website, and they also have information sheets that all of the school systems can provide to the coaches and parents.
Okay. All right, question, Ms. Phillips?
I think we do. Do all the schools have defibrillators? I thought so. That's good for the public to know.
Right.
That, God forbid, something should happen. We do have equipment.
Okay. I have a question that Kelly on page 2, number 5. All documentation, so forth, to be maintained for a period of three years. Where will this information be kept?
That documentation would consist of the forms that were signed by the coaches and by the parents. Those would need to be kept either at the school or under the systems athletic director's department. That's required under state law, that those forms have to be maintained for at least three years.
All right, now that would be the same as on number 7, if before a child can return to practice or competition, the health, the clearance should be turned in and would be turned in and kept at the school. Is that right?
Yes, yes, it could, it would be.
Dr. Brown?
I realize that we have no choice but to pass this because it's mandated by the state, but it's a policy that's going to have a lot of unintended consequences and work, and is not, from a physician's standpoint, very well-written. There are lots of issues that I have with this, especially the fact that in one place, the symptoms are significantly different than the symptoms that are listed in all the other places in the document. They've added several symptoms that can be a lot more vague, and as someone who played sports for a large part of their life, you're going to have athletes at the high school level, at the youth level, who are going to be short of breath, who are going to have nausea, who are going to have some of these symptoms. And the work and the amount of money that's going to be spent getting these children approved to be back in sports, I think is going to be a significant expense. So again, I realize that we have no choice because it's state-mandated, but this is a policy that I have a lot of concerns about.
Is this policy, the state policy?
It comes verbatim from the state statute.
I have a problem with number 10.
Me too.
If a coach is found violating, okay, for the first violation, suspension from coaching. For the second violation, suspension from coaching of any school activity for the remainder of the season. And the third one, it's going to take three times for this person to violate, for them to be removed from dealing with our young people. And I think that's one time too many. And I don't know whether we can do anything. And I think Dr. Brown has got certainly some insight on this that some of us would not have, but whether or not we can add more teeth into our own policy, or do we have to go along with the state policy?
I think that sets the minimum of what has to be done when a coach is in violation of the policy. The statute does. And like any time, you have to implement some sort of discipline regarding a violation of a policy. It would depend on the fact situation if you would need to implement a more severe discipline than what is the minimum required by the state statute.
This was drawn up by what department in the state government?
This is actually verbatim from the legislation that was passed by the Tennessee General Assembly. It is found at the Tennessee Department of Health's website, all of the information.
That answers my question. I really am disappointed in that they don't have more teeth into it. You would think that they would. Okay, Ms. Smith?
First of all, I've gotten two emails from the county level this week, like they're completing these forms right now, like a rush, like they said this has already been passed, and we need to get these forms in, because we didn't know, that kind of thing. So this is already in action in other places, but I think it puts a lot of burden on... I mean, we have elementary sports. We don't have coaches that have been, you know, trained to be coaches. We have teachers that are being very nice to go out there and, you know, show a child how to hold a basketball. I mean, this just seems like a big burden to be putting our little elementary athletes, our little elementary coaches on there.
Well, they have to abide by the same rules and regulations, just as they did with the concussion policy that we dealt with a year ago. You know, it's all, it's all dealing with the safety of the child.
Right. I mean, but parents are around... I mean, this is... I just think that this is too much, too many laws involving this, when parents need to be aware, and the bottom line should be that the parents should be aware of their children's health. But I guess we have to go along with it.
Mr. Barrett?
I got a few things. Line 35, number 2, it says, "Training." Is that like an online thing, or it doesn't require a cost or anything for them to do that?
No, the Department of Health, they have links to different organizations that we can get the training through. It's similar to the concussion training. It's an online training that they can go through. The Simmons Fund is one of the organizations that has training, and the Sudden Cardiac Arrest Foundation, and also the American Heart Association.
Okay. And then number 3, line 39, we're saying the director of schools, can we add or designate there, so it's not having to fall to the director of schools? You want all those forms?
No, no. My thumb was up when you were saying that. Way to go.
And then number 10, line 87, you know, we already talked about the violations. Is there going to be a database anywhere where these violations are going to be stored? I mean, what's to prevent a coach, if they violate it, to go to the county and start coaching? I mean, or vice versa, somebody in the county violates and comes over and starts teaching our sixth, you know, coaching our 6th grade?
I don't think that has been provided for in this statute.
Just wanted to put that out there.
And you could really have a lot of that with your volunteer coaches.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Well, I did, kind of piggybacking on what you said about, I was very concerned that we would give someone three chances. Also, that's number 10, for the third violation, suspend the coach. But if you said this is the minimum, then we could make it a little stronger, correct? So could we take away C there for the third violation?
Or would... Well, and you could escalate it, depending, again, on the fact situation. We could, I guess you would want to take away maybe B and...
Take away B and change C to B?
Right.
And maybe put in there another clause that would say, maybe, the athletics director, I guess that's Mr. Ringstaff, maybe that he would have a database or something of coaches, so that... coaches, so that there would be a record of if there was anyone who violated this policy.
I'm surprised that it doesn't say the director of schools or their designation.
Right.
Which would-
So, you can add it.
So, we could, we can pass this tonight on first reading, and then if we have strong recommendations, Ms. Baker, get them to you-
Yes.
-before they, when will this, you propose this to come up again for a second reading?
You're meeting at the end of the month.
In November, 24th?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
I don't know that anything we have to say is going to do much good because of the state, but except add, trying to add more teeth. But I did want to say, you know, as a parent also, whose childhood played sports, you know, if you're running, your heart's going to be beating fast. And, you know, some, many times, children, or occasionally, a child can have a congenital heart defect that the family's completely unaware of. So, you can see where they're trying to protect the family, but it's a real catch-22, you know, with, with, you know, because you couldn't get nauseous if you've been running and getting hot. I guess my biggest concern is that knowing that some of our children are ADHD medication, and that already poses a heart risk, those children, do they have to have special permission to play sports because of the medication they are on?
I don't have an answer for that, but I'm not-
I think that's a, that's a-
I'm not sure that-
I don't believe so.
I don't know.
I think that would be important to know, because they are at additional risk already because of the medication.
I think sometimes we get in things like this, and we're thinking, and those who develop policies like this from the state, they're thinking more of the secondary school athlete, and not so much of the elementary school athlete. And we are more concerned, certainly with the elementary, we're concerned about the secondary, too, but those are the ones that we are immediately concerned in. A lot of times, we know the, the younger students that participate in athletics, they may not always know that they have some certain condition, and these will pop up, whereas you get somebody into the secondary schools, and they have a little bit more knowledge. Of course, you've got a lot less, less participants, too, on secondary level than you might have in the elementary level. Dr. Brown, you had something else you wanted to?
Well, two, one comment, one question. I thought the concussion policy was a very reasonable policy to have in place, and I thought it was pretty well-written. I've already expressed my concerns about this one. Anywhere in the language, does it give a timeframe from the symptoms that occur until the death occurs?
No, it doesn't. The language that I have in your policy is verbatim within the statute.
So, an athlete could have nausea during a practice, and two weeks later, the child suddenly dies, and we're responsible for that? I just have real concerns about the unintended consequences and the potential litigation involved in this policy.
And I think this is something that you might want to talk, the board might want to talk to legislators about.
Do we have to vote yes for this?
Yes.
Well, there is a section of the statute that states that no coach, head of any athletic activity, licensed healthcare professional, or other person acting in good faith within the authority prescribed under this act shall be liable on account of any act or omission in good faith while so engaged, provided that good faith is used in this act shall not include willful misconduct, gross negligence, or reckless disregard. So, there is some protection for staff in the statute.
And as a hospital representative, having spent a lot of time in court, the lawyers would just chew that up and spit it out, so.
Kelly, is there an urgency to have this policy put in place, probably before we start with basketball and-
They're playing now.
Basketball's already going. It's, it's, this statute is effective January 1 of 2016. It's when it's effective.
Okay.
That's why I was bringing the policy to you here in November, to give us November and December, to get it in place. So, I'm not sure when the basketball season officially ends for city schools, and what our next sport is that come out.
I think it's over.
I think it's over.
Is it already over?
I mean, not, it will be over at that point. It's definitely in action right now, right now.
That's where all your police officers are, there at the games.
So, then, in reality, we're, we're really not pushed for time on this policy if it doesn't take effect until January of 2016. And basically, ours is, is over in December. Am I right? Do we have other interscholastic athletics? We don't have soccer teams, do we? Baseball, school-sponsored?
Well, if we've got a, the definition of a youth, a school-youth athletic activity is an organized athletic activity when the majority of the participants are under 18 and are engaged in an organized athletic game or competition against another team, club, or entity, or in practice or preparation for an organized game or competition against another team, club, or entity. It does not include athletic activity that's entered into for instructional purposes only, or athletic activity that is incidental to non-athletic programs or lessons.
So, it would not include PE classes?
No, it does not include PE classes. I'm not sure what, if any, other competitive sport we have coming. I thought soccer was a possibility.
We have soccer clinics, tennis clinics, baseball clinics, cheerleading. So, would those be affected if they're not in, getting ready for competition?
They're impacted if they are going to be in competition against other teams.
Okay.
My question is, does this have to be in place by January 1? Are we mandated to have something in place by January 1?
If we are engaging in school-youth athletic activity that meets the definition of the statute, we need to have it in place.
I'm not certain that there wouldn't be a cheerleading activity, like a competition-
I think there will be.
-at, after January 1.
Yeah, most cheerleading competitions are in February.
The basketball might be over, but the cheerleading continues.
Dr. Brown?
Despite my reservations about the policy, I think we're more at risk for not having it in place than we are for the, going ahead and approving it, and then talking to our legislators and trying to, to get some of this cleared up.
So, in that regard?
Ms. Rehneer?
So, in that regard, I guess I will go ahead and make the motion that we approve this on first reading with the deletions that we had, B on 10, and was there something else?
I had a couple things.
And Jared had one. And, you know, go ahead and approve it on first reading, make the motion to approve it on first reading with those changes, because we have to act upon it. So, I made the motion.
Okay.
Second?
All right, thank you. Ms. Phillips seconds the motion. Is there any other discussion? But King?
Everybody's kind of brought up a lot of the questions I have had and stuff, but I feel like there's going to be a lot of unintended consequences of trying to get to, what is the purpose? And the answer is, I keep coming to, or to, to make parents and coaches, be they volunteer or paid, coaches, aware of the symptoms and what can happen. And if they coach, volunteer, or paid, violates them, there's punishment. So, to me, it's two things they're trying to do. Be honest with you, I got confused when they threw in the word cardiac. I thought, oh, this is, we're going to have to mandate training for the defibrillator. And it's not that, it's, it's, you know, that's where I got thrown off was the word cardiac, I'll be honest. I've known people that have, somebody I went to elementary school with, his son drank too much fluid and died, but he had the very same symptoms. He came out voluntarily, and he did not go back, but he never recovered. But it widened with the cardiac thing, and that's where I think I got thrown off, was symptoms are, you know, the symptoms would be there caused by medicine, like Ms. Phillips brings up. But if the goal is for education, that's fine. If the goal is to set punishment, I get that. But I, I think that we need to know, how are we going to keep track of this? How are we going to keep track of the pe, coaches, volunteer or paid, and make sure that they've been properly trained? And in other words, we, the unintended consequences for us, the school system. And who's, who, who in the, who in the central office is going to head this up?
Ms. Smith?
It would be Mr. Ringstaff.
Right. I will tell you that the same questions that you have superintendent have asked about the T double S double A and the whole business of, of the coaches there with, that going through the background checks, because their question was exactly what you said. If T double S double A doesn't keep up with it, then how are school systems going to keep up with who, what coach moves from what, you know, from district to district? So, you're exactly right. Those same kind of unintended consequences and have been asked about other things.
Because we always ask for parent volunteers, and we have somebody, "I'll help, be glad to help," then how do we make sure that they're properly trained, whether the training is on paper, in person, or online? How do we verify that and make sure that, that we, I've drawn a blank for the word, that we record that the training has indeed taken place?
You know, that I-
Ms. Smith?
So, what I wanted to do is, once we pass this policy, that it be redrafted in a way that we could give it to our legislators and say, "This might be a better effort."
That's a good idea.
I'm not the best person, but somebody else might be a better person to talk about the-
Sorry. Get that.
Sorry.
And that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Get that.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm just saying that instead of us griping, we offer a solution, so.
Kelly, this, and I know this is identified and Tennessee Code annotated, was there a Senate bill or a House bill that this coincided with, do you know?
It is Public Chapter 325, and it was Senate Bill 985, House Bill 32.
House, House Bill what?
32.
Okay.
But it was, the, the Public Chapter signed by the governor was 325. And I can email the board copies of the Public Chapter and the link on the Department of Health's website.
Well, I just want to know how to identify, when I talk to these people I want to talk to, the legislature, and I guess I could do that through the Senate bill and the House bill.
Right, right.
And that, why, well, okay. All right, we've got several, Ms. Rehneer and then Ms. Phillips?
I just have a quick, just a quick question. When we were asking about documentation, Ms. Smith has helped the county with coaching with tennis, and you had to do the training. Did you have, is there a certificate at the end or something? So, there would be something that, that would be-
Yes, there is a certificate, and it's, I mean, if, I just, I can't imagine our, asking our elementary coaches, like the parent volunteers, to take that class. It took me 14 hours.
Oh, I thought it was an hour-long thing.
No.
14 hours?
It, it took me 14 hours. I just can't, it, it's really hard to believe that we would be asking the parents who played high school basketball, who are helping fourth graders, to go out there and do that.
I wonder if there's any way to find out how long this training is with their, do you know anything about that, Ms. Baker?
Well, I can email you the link.
Okay.
I don't believe it's anywhere near that long. I think it's basically a video that you watch.
Right.
On the cardiac, I mean, the-
The hours was all online, and it, it had all, you know, the, you had to do the health component, and just to, the coaching component was very brief, but there was a major health component. So, anyway, that, that's my experience. That's how long it took, and that's why I would think it'd be hard to get vol, you know, parent coaches like that.
I just know that usually, anything that I've been involved in, if you had to take a little class or watch a little video, there's some kind of certificate of completion. So, I would assume probably the same thing with this.
Yeah.
Ms. Phillips?
All right, Ms. Phillips? My comment to go along with Ms. Smith was, if we do review the policy after we have passed it, to present it in a different form to our legislators, I would like to see coordinated school health play a part in that review, because I think they'll think of things that, you know, much more important than, than I would do. As well as, of course, Ms. Baker and anybody else on your team that you think should.
We've got an expert on our board.
Yes.
I'd be happy to participate.
That would be great.
Well, from what I understand from, from you, Ms. Baker, and also from what Dr. Brown has said, we're probably, we need to vote on, on the motion to accept this, and then even if we pass it on second reading, we can always come back and add to or delete, correct?
Oh, definitely.
On our, our standpoint.
Yes.
So, the only thing we are voting on now is, is this as presented with the two changes, I think, that we talked about. Okay. All right, any other discussion? You read the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous decision. Thank you very much.
Next on your agenda, you have reports and information. The weather is going to change, and so to let you know how, and to let the public know how the inclement weather, school closing procedure works, basically, it starts early in the morning typically. And what we're looking at is really the safety of the buses and also the safety of the children. So, we look at the streets, we also look at the campuses to make sure that the sidewalks are in good shape. Our maintenance department does an amazing job with our sidewalks and with, with our parking lots. But involved with that decision would be transportation, would be maintenance, would be finance administrative services, would be the police dispatch, thank you very much for answering my call, would be any, anyone else that, that could help as far as determining what the streets look like. Then typically, what we will do is I will call the communications director after I've talked with the transportation department and the maintenance department, and also with, with the finance administrative service department and ESP, and let them know that we're going to be closed. And what will happen is that will be tweeted. And then also, our communications department will contact the radio station here in town, the four television stations in Nashville, Channel 3, and also the newspapers. We try to make that decision by 5:00. I can think of several times last year and the year before where it ran awfully close because the weather was predicted to hit about the time that our buses were rolling, which is about 5:45 in the morning. So, we have to have that decision made by 5:45. But we try to determine what is, what is going to be safe for our children, and we don't want to close schools unless we have to, but if we need to, then we will. So, that's, that's the procedure.
Ms. Rehneer?
Yes, we're looking for the safety of our children and bus drivers and everyone on the road, but I, having been in that situation for a long time, pardon me, I kind of have a little question about when the opening of schools delayed for transportation because of inclement weather, excuse me. All personnel are expected to make every reasonable effort to observe normal working hours. And as a teacher, sometimes I felt like, well, if the kids can come in two hours late because it's safer for them, why not the teachers? So, I have a little problem with that. And could we say, come 30 minutes before the children are expected, or change this in some way? Because I really don't think it's fair.
What I will tell you is, I, I do not like to make late calls. If we're going to be out, we're going to be out. But what happens when we, when we open an hour or two hours late, in fact, I don't think, I don't think I've made a call of opening late. I think we made one of having to close early. But I don't think we've made one for opening late because it's just too difficult. It's entirely too difficult. If, if, if the weather is, is bad enough for us not to, to go at the regular time, I don't like starting late, because we wind up with a lot of absentees. A lot of times, your parents cannot, they don't hear that we're going to be late. It gets confusing about what the time is on the late, so. It gets confusing about what the time is on the late, so I just, I think that is there because we do have children that may show up with that two hour, and that's, as far as I know, just the way it's always been, Mr. Renee.
I, I know that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably because there's the chance that you're going to have children that are going to, that are going to show up late. So, Mr. Anderson, do you know, is that...
What happens, sometimes his parents will not hear the reports, and they bring their kids to school, and, you know, we have so many ESP employees, and then if they're not in ESP, then we have an issue with that. That's why I think it's that way.
And I think when it comes to that, there was a time when I think we started to, to close, and so I think that discretion, if they possibly can, I think what I've found is the principals are pretty reasonable with that. And I can think, and it's been several years, but I do think we closed early, and it was a situation where if the teachers, I think the principal talked with the teachers, and if they could stay, they stayed until the children were gone, but if not, they went ahead and left. So, I think, I think that's taken into consideration pretty heavily.
Okay.
But I don't like closing. I mean, I don't like opening late. I find it's a real problem.
I agree. Well, I just had to let you know my objection.
Right. I agree.
Opening late and closing early, both of them create problems.
It's a problem because you're going to have to have, to contact and make sure that, it's just hard. Parents, I don't want to send children home without parents being there, and when you're closing early, there's always that, that chance. So, unless, unless we know the weather's going to hit at a really inappropriate time, I'd rather just not go. And there are a lot of times, I know, a couple of years ago, the superintendent of the county and I were really, it was supposed to, the snow was supposed to come between 10 and noon, and we had canceled schools. He, he was saying, "I sure do hope those snowflakes stop."
Well, personally, I think that, I appreciate when you make those decisions because we don't know what's going to happen, and if it's been predicted, you know, and every, every channel and the Weather Channel and everybody says it's coming, I really think parents would much more go along with it that way than that uncertainty of, oh, do we go? If they're going to go, are they going to get out early, just as we've just been talking about? I think it's a much better choice, and, you know, if somebody gets upset about it, we're sorry, we're doing the best we can for the children.
Right. But we do try to make those as early as we can. It's just been lately, the last few years, it's had to come early morning, so, and I apologize for that.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. King?
When, I think it's happened, but I can't remember. Is it possible that the county schools will close and we stay open?
Absolutely.
Okay? And what's the rationale for that, like Ms. Phillips always says to the people at home?
We don't have Laverne.
We don't have...
A lot of times, easy explanation. We, we have, well, the city, the city does, when you think about it, they do a great job of clearing the roads, really. And, and it does make a difference. When you have schools in Laverne, and I know last year, Don, he, he had situations where out toward Las Cassas and the hills out there, that's really the reason he closed, and he made the comment, "The streets in town are fine," but he has to look at the whole county. And so, it does make a difference when you're just looking from Florence Road, you know, South Church Street, than when you're looking at Christiana and, and Laverne and Eagle and Las Cassas. But we, we communicate with each other on that, so I, I know pretty well whether he's going to close or not, and he'll, he'll know whether I'm going to close. Lot of early morning texts going on. The next report that you have is on ESEA and IDEA, which means federal, because you have those abbreviations there. But I'm going to ask Karen Hawkins and Joe Marlin to come. I really have to commend both of them. This, this, the compliance review that we had came earlier than we expected this year, and they did a magnificent job. Karen does a great job with title, and it's very complicated, and each, each title has rules and regulations, and you can do some things and you can't do some things, and so that's complicated, and, and you all know how complicated IDEA is. Before you, before you report, though, Karen is going to be leaving us unfortunately in December, at least for part, she'll be leaving us partly. She'll be staying on and working with ELL and with title, and I'm eternally grateful to her for that. But, but she is going to be doing some training, which she loves to do, and so we congratulate on her on that. But what she's done for the city schools has been really remarkable, and it's just been a real joy to work with her. So, I'll let you give your report, Karen. Thank you, and thank you, Joe.
Yeah, sorry. Shouldn't have started that. Thank you. We had our visit from the Office of Consolidated Planning and Monitoring in October, October the 20th through the 23rd, and I've been through several federal projects monitoring, and in the past, they've been very much compliance-oriented with a checklist, and you would give them a box, and you would leave the room, and they would go through all your stuff and try to find, were you in compliant with the laws and regulations related to federal projects? This one was a bit different, and I would say for the best. Wouldn't you agree it was for the best? They've shifted their focus to more about practices that result in good things for students, looking at student results. Now, I, they did still have their checklist, it was about 30 pages long, so we had a lot of things that we had to organize and get ready for that, and they met with us at the district office on the first day. On the second day, they spent a full day in two of our schools that, that were randomly selected. On the third day, we went to a non-public school that received some federal funds through us and visited that school, and then wrote the report and had a, a report out for us. And as, in this process, they look for exemplary practices, they look for areas that they would recommend that we could implement things to improve, and then if they see any things, compliance issues, then they make those recommendations for us, and then they give us a period of time to correct those and then come back. So, it didn't feel like a gotcha, and they didn't want it to be. If they had questions, they kept digging until we could get the right information for them, and for that, I'm appreciative. And we wanted to highlight the recommendations and really the things they talked about for exemplary practices, and they, we had two things that were identified as exemplary practices, and I'm going to talk about one, and Joe's going to talk about the other one. And one thing that they noticed everywhere they went was that this district has many community partners, all the way from churches coming in and packing backpacks with students to send home so that they'll have food for the weekend, offering buddy programs and tutoring services after schools. And one of the things they said is when you would, y'all told us these things at the district office, and then every visit that we went in the schools, we heard the same things, and they felt like that was an exemplary practice. They talked, they were fascinated with the chow bus, they had me drive around it a few times so that they could see it, and they thought it was fascinating that that bus went out into the community when students were being tutored and to provide dinner for those students as well. So, they really commended us on our community partnerships. And Joe, you can talk about the next one.
The, the second area that they considered an exemplary practice was our school-level support plans, and you've heard reports from Ms. Frank, from Kim Frank, regarding the, the CI 3T program, the behavior support programs that were put in place, and I think there, we're really impressed with the, excuse me, with the fact that we have it in all of our schools. It's really hard to put practices in place, but it's really very hard to put them in, in place in all schools, and I think that's one of the things that impressed them. They noticed as they visited that the schools were able to talk about those, and, and so it was obvious that our schools were, had actually implemented these plans, and these were making a difference for the students. So, as, as Karen was saying, the results part was what they were looking for, and I think they saw this as one of our practices, that really makes some results, positive results for students.
So, they also had some recommendations, and I'm going to talk about the ones for ESEA, the title programs, and then Joe's going to talk about the ones for IDEA or special education. One of the things they talked about was while we have a great deal of parental involvement, we have a lot of parents in and out of our buildings, they encouraged us to capitalize on that when they come into our buildings and do some things with them that would focus more on academics and ways that parents could help students be successful in school. So, that's something that they made a recommendation. Our schools are writing school improvement plans right now, so they will include some of those things in their school improvements. These are just recommendations, they're not compliance issues, they were just things they suggested. Another thing they talked about is for our comparability, we have to prove that all of our schools have comparable staff, and then the federal projects is on top of that. That's probably the simplest way I know to explain it. And while we do that, in fact, your staffing ratios, we always meet comparability because you do have those procedures in place, they just wanted us to write them down. So, that's something that we've worked, we're going to, I think Ralph's already started working on, but it really doesn't change our practice, they just want to see it on paper. And then the last thing they talked about, to think about our teachers that we consider are irreplaceables, and things that we can do to motivate them and encourage them to stay with us, and think about retention. While we don't have retention, teacher retention problems, they felt like that that could be something, an area where we could work and improve. So, that's another thing they talked about. And then there's...
In the area of special education, what they noted and, and made some recommendations were about were things that very pleasingly to us were things we'd already started working on. So, you'll notice from the handout that you got, they ask us to think about our inclusion practices and make sure that we're, that we're developing comprehensive schedules for inclusion across the district, and we are looking at those practices and how we can improve those. Secondly, they asked that we look at, make sure that all of our documentation, and we have to, all of our IEPs and our special education documents are uploaded into a system, and we've been working on that, we actually started on that two years ago. And so, this was something that, that we've already begun to look at. And then finally, to make sure that all of our teachers are participating in a, a practice that they call instructionally appropriate IEPs, and that's a training that the state did, and we actually had them come and train all of our staff May of '14. And so, we're sort of ahead of the curve on that, we're working. The only thing we have to be aware of is making sure that new staff, as we hire them, receive that same sort of training. And this, this past fall, in September, we went to four different schools throughout the district, made some training available to all of our teachers, so I feel like we're on track for that. If you will notice, on the last page, there were two areas that they asked us to correct, and those were sort of compliance areas that happened, happened to be as they reviewed some records of specific students, and of course, there's no information on there that would breach any confidentiality, but in, in those two cases, just so you'll know, we had, there's a lot of signatures that have to be obtained, and in one of our circumstances, we had received all but one. The parents signed it on two other pages, but forgot to sign on the third page. And then the, the second case was a case where we received a student from another district, and all their records did not transfer over. We have since obtained those from Metro Nashville. As a matter of fact, we got those today, got the fax in from them, so we've corrected that little small area of compliance. I think, do you want to say, anything else you want to say? And do you have any questions?
I did.
And Ms. Barrett?
Inclusion. So, inclusion of what? I'm, I guess I'm not familiar with that term.
It's a specialized term, and we're, and we are, we're bad about that, especially if we have our own language, we have all our acronyms and all those...
I know that.
Inclusion means including students in the general education environment...
Okay.
...and meeting their needs in that environment as much as possible.
Okay.
And so, we're, we're doing a good job on that, we just, you know, want to see...
I figured that's what it meant, but I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good report. Appreciate you and the work that you do.
One more thing, Karen, I'd, I'd like for you to tell the board about the report you got yesterday. No, that's all right.
I forgot it.
I asked her if she'd do that, and she said, "Remind me," so thank goodness I remembered it. But, but I think it, I think it explains why we like to keep her around to do ELL next year, so go ahead.
Well, every year, we have certain requirements, annual measurable objectives for ESL, and even though we didn't know what those were this year because we changed our assessment, we have, in that we were able to, of the three requirements, one is measuring students' progress for English acquisition, and that's measured on the ESL assessment, the WEDA assessment, and we exceeded the state's goal for us on that, so we met that. Even with a more complex assessment this year, the WEDA assessment is, really has a higher demand on our students, we were able to exit over 10% of our students, so out of 500, we were able to exit 53 students with both fives in overall composite and fives in literacy. So, we feel real confident that these students are going to be able to go back out and really address those state assessments that we have. And then as far as our TCAP with ESL, ESL was really our only subgroup that met the gap closure requirement for ELA, and so we met that, we met our participation rate, and the only thing that we didn't meet was our math gap closure. But I felt like that that was really progress for, for this group that had been working so hard on implementing new standards and a new assessment, so I was very proud of the teachers and the schools and the work that they've been doing.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to take a moment and thank Ms. Hawkins for all her work these years at Murfreesboro City Schools, and we're glad you're going to be staying with us part-time, so.
Anything else coming for the board of the business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Whoop, wait a minute.
I'm sorry. Well, when we went through this policy on cardiac arrest and having just read the minutes of the retreat, we talked about letting TSBA do our policies. Have we moved in that direction?
Yes, I've, I've had a conversation with them. We've got a questionnaire that we're completing and should be submitted Tuesday, I mean, Thursday. And so, they're starting work on our policies, but this is one that...
We have to get...
We have to get in place before Jan, January 1.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, and we are adjourned.